Good evening. Good evening. We call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council. Today, Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. Please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. We appreciate everyone coming out this evening. We've got some important items on our agenda this evening, so we'll jump right in. The first item of our agenda is comments from the City Council. Does anyone have any comments this evening?
Two things. First off, I'd like to thank the staff of Public Works for all their hard work they've been doing trying to get dirt up to the landfill ahead of the deadline. Put cover up there. Been like me and you go up and down Valley Drive, you always see a truck going one way or the other in the past few weeks, so they've worked very hard and I thank them for that. I'd also like to remind people this is Fire Prevention Week. The Fire Department had an open house the other day and while I was over there talking to them, they reminded me that one of the services they provide for residents of the city is fire alarms. They will, or, yeah, so you can request one. They can come out and they'll install that for you. So, a smoke alarm, not a fire alarm. Thank you, miss spoke. But a smoke alarm, they provide those and will even come out and install them for you. Make sure they're installed correctly. So if anybody needs one, just contact the fire station. They'll be happy, more than happy to come and do that.
So I do have a comment also and it kind of is tied into what Councilman Hartley talked about. I'd had several people reach out to me about the dirt and the mud coming from Island Road onto Lee Highway, where we've been moving the dirt to the landfill. And so Public Works has done a good job since I made them aware of those concerns. Using less water to keep the dust down and then cleaning the road when there is mud. So, so thank you to Public Works for that. And once we're, now that we're wrapped up there, we'll be able to keep the road much cleaner. So I appreciate, I appreciate their work on that.
City manager comments?
Yeah, Council and members of the public. I want to thank the members of Public Works staff who have worked diligently since June the 13th to 14th of hauling dirt to our landfill to not only comply with the federal court order, but one of the recommendations of the expert panel report. All because we have, today was or yesterday was a deadline, doesn't mean that they're going to quit hauling dirt. We'll be continuing to hauling dirt to the landfill. We continue to deal with recommendations of the expert panel report and the recommendations as well. So trucks will not stop moving dirt. They'll continue to move dirt for an extended period of time. And I appreciate their hard work to get this done. They've lost weekends with their family and nights as well to get this project done. So thank you to all those for that.
Thank you. The next item is matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items. And I don't believe anyone signed up for that. I think everyone who signed up, signed up for an agenda item later. So the next item is the adoption of our regular agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented. Second.
Okay. A motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard is absent. Farnum?
Yes. Yes, and before we go to item one, just let the record reflect that Mr. Wingard is not present this evening. Item number one is a proclamation recognizing October as Positive and Adverse Childhood Experiences Awareness and Action Month. And nobody signed up for public comment, but we'll go right into staff report. And we have Melissa Roberts here this evening. If you'd like to come up as well, that'd be perfectly fine.
Council tonight, you have a proclamation before you declaring a Recognizing Positive and Adverse Childhood Experiences Awareness and Action Month for October of 2022.
Okay. Thank you. You're free to, to...
So Mayor Farnum and City Council members, I appreciate you all recognizing October as Positive and Adverse Childhood Experiences Month. An opportunity to educate the community that there are specific instances of toxic stress in a child's life that can have lifelong negative health impact. But resilience and using a trauma-informed lens can build that resilience throughout the course of a lifetime. So I encourage you all to learn more about ACEs and PCEs, or PACES as we call them. I encourage you to get involved in the Northeast Tennessee or Southwest Virginia Trauma-Informed Care Networks. But I mostly encourage you all, we are doing a workshop at Bristol Motor Speedway on October 20th. From 10:00 AM until 2:30, we're bringing an international speaker who is doing an Agents of Change workshop. It is an evidence-based workshop and we encourage you all to join us for that. And we've had great response from the community. There are still seats available. But again, I just encourage you to continue to learn more about how ACEs can impact our workforce, our workforce development, our workforce sustainability, and how resilience and trauma-informed care can help offset that. So thank you all for this recognition.
Thank you so much, Ms. Roberts. And we'll have a reading of the proclamation.
Whereas adverse childhood experiences, ACEs such as poverty, racism, abuse, neglect, a parent who suffers from substance abuse or mental illness, and unsafe neighborhoods are harmful events that happened during childhood. And whereas studies in the fields of neurobiology, psychology, epigenetics, child development, and medicine, among others, show that ACEs create toxic stress in children that significantly increase a person's risk for chronic disease, obesity, premature death, mental illness, substance abuse, incarceration, and becoming a victim of violence in adulthood, and can be passed on to the next generation. And whereas ACEs have been declared a public health crisis by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and nearly 60% of adults report at least one ACE with economic burdens in Tennessee, estimated by the Sycamore Institute to be $5.2 billion annually in cost across the US, estimated in the hundreds of billions of dollars each year. And whereas positive childhood experiences such as feeling safe and protected by an adult in the home, relationships with at least one responsible, non-parental adult who is involved in a child's life, or feeling a sense of belonging to a larger group or supportive systems that can offset ACEs. And whereas research shows that adults who reported high number of ACEs, but also high numbers of PCEs, reported 72% lower levels of adult depression and/or poor mental health, and a 1,200% greater chance of a child flourishing. And whereas by working together through innovative collaborative approaches to prevent or mitigate the negative effects of ACEs that can help individuals build resilience to adversity through safe, stable, and nurturing relationships at home and in the community. And whereas in 2019, through Bristol's Promise, Bristol launched a trauma-informed system of care as best practices following recommendations to do so by the Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration. Therefore be resolved in the City Council of Bristol, Virginia, that hereby proclaim the month of October as PACES Awareness Month and Thursday, October 20th, 22, as PACES Action Day. We encourage all residents to become informed about the impacts of ACEs and toxic stress and learn of PCEs that promote prevention, healing, and resilience in children, adults, and communities in order to build a stronger and healthier Bristol. Together as city leaders and community partners, this proclamation indicates our commitment to exploring new ways to make Bristol a more resilient community for all its citizens. Adopted this the 11th day of October, 2022.
Okay. Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the proclamation as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion?
I'll just say very briefly, thank you to, thank you to Ms. Roberts for being here and to Bristol's Promise for the incredible amount of work they do. Not just on ACEs, but on our homeless situation. And I was fortunate when I was mayor to serve alongside Ms. Fire Robin while she was mayor of Bristol, Tennessee. And, and I was, I was taught a whole lot by her, you know, talking to her about ACEs and what Bristol's Promise does for, for the children in our community. And it's incredibly appreciated. They're, you know, we're lucky that we live in the time we do that, that we're aware of this problem and how to combat it. It's an uphill battle, but you know, children 30 or 40 years ago had the same problems, but there was no, not as much infrastructure, not as much network to help them. So, so we're fortunate that we are making strides on that, making progress. So, so thank you for being here and thank you for all the work you all do.
Thank you. So we do have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. And Ms. Roberts, if you'd like to come up to the front. The next item of our agenda is a, item two, a joint public hearing for a special use permit, SUO2-2022, multi-family residential in a B3 district, Randolph Street. So I hereby open the public hearing. And we have members of the Planning Commission here this evening. I asked one of them to come and open their hearing as well.
Thank you, Mayor Farnum. I hereby open the joint public hearing of the Bristol, Virginia Planning Commission.
Thank you. And the first person who signed up to speak is Ms. Partica? Am I pronouncing that right? Ms. Partica? Hello, how are you?
Good evening. Our concern is that we have, we live right across from that property and they have the motel further down. And there's always a lot of activity there. And we have the ring and we often find people on the porch or near our home sort of casing our place. So our concern was, is this for low-income housing? Is it a multi-dwelling? Is it a senior housing? We didn't know. It just said multi-family. It didn't specify what it would be. And if the council could address the fact that they need more surveillance of that area, we would appreciate it.
Absolutely. And, and we'll get into that in the next item here. Mr. Dietrich here, we'll go over some other details about, about the particulars of it. So hopefully we can try to answer all those questions.
Most of our area there is seniors, homeless homes, and we're concerned.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. And that's the last person that signed up for this item. So next we'll move into staff report. Mr. Dietrich?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the planning commission. The city has received a request from Mr. Michael Baer, who has submitted an application for a special use permit to allow multifamily residential in a B3 general business district, zoning district, for property owned by Terry Moore and Patricia Henson. You've got the site up here on your own overhead. As you can see, the zoning for this property is B3. Bristol City Code Section 50-32 lists the permitted uses for this zoning district and multifamily is only allowed with a special use permit. Density and yard requirements for a permit allowing multifamily in a B3 would be in accordance with the R3 requirements. This is not a rezoning request. The special use permit allows for a specific use to occur without changing the zoning district. The site is property, as you can see, located between Randolph Street, Winterberry Drive, and Monroe Street. The property consists of 12 vacant lots and a, one lot that has a single-family dwelling, which if approved would be demolished. The description is to, the proposed project is to construct 30 to 35 townhouse units on the property, depending on the engineering and utility capacity. The concept site plan is included in your packet. Virginia Code 1522286A3 provides the authority to City Council to grant special use permits under suitable regulations and safeguards. The process for granting a special use permit is largely left to the local ordinance or code to define. City Code 50186F stipulates that a special use permit may be granted following due consideration of eight particular questions regarding the impact of the proposed use and the availability of local services for the planned use. A complete application is required along with the application fee. This project has been advertised in accordance with state and city code. Property notices or adjoining property notices were sent to the adjoining property owners also in accordance with state and city code. So I just want to go through the eight stipulations that have to be considered prior to the special use permit being granted. The first, and, and I will read a few extra comments for you. I did receive some comments from staff after the agenda was posted. So there'll be a little extra there and then in a couple of weeks when you decide, all that'll be in your staff report. First, the sufficiency of streets and public ways to accommodate increased traffic flow that considered depending on city engineer or certified traffic engineer being given particular weight by the council. We did have a comment from our transportation planner, Melanie Fleener. A 35-unit townhouse development is expected to generate approximately 250 trips per day, per weekday, and 140 trips per weekend day. I would also not consider, I would not consider that an issue. And I would also note that typically, commercial uses generate more traffic than residential uses. And since it is zone commercial, a business could locate there without any special permission. The sufficiency of electrical sewer water services for the proposed project. Richard Atkins of VVU commented that we have no electrical issues with this request. Philip King also of VVU commented. The vacant lots along Randolph Street and Winterberry Drive do not have sanitary sewer at this time. The lots along Monroe Street are currently served by an eight-inch sanitary sewer line that runs along Monroe Street. The elevation of the vacant lots is below the elevation of the sanitary sewer lines available. Therefore, a privately-owned pump station will need to be installed to provide sewer service to this area. The sanitary sewer flow from the proposed development will ultimately flow to the Bristol, Tennessee sanitary sewer system. Both Bristol, Virginia Utilities and Bristol, Tennessee sanitary sewer systems will need to be evaluated to ensure that the existing infrastructure has adequate capacity to start the development. The lots along Randolph Street are served by a six-inch water main. The lots along Monroe Street are served by an eight-inch water main. The lots along Winterberry Drive currently have no water service. The developer will be required to demonstrate that existing VVUA water system is capable of meeting the needs of the proposed development. If required, the developer will be responsible for all costs associated with increasing the VVU water system to serve the development. The sufficiency of fire, police, garbage, and other services of the city to meet the needs of the proposed project. The opinion of the department head of each department providing such city service being given particular weight. Public Works Director Jacob Chandler commented that depending on how the property develops, private trash service may be required and will be determined during the site plan process. Fire Marshal Eric Blevins commented, the hydrant locations and water flows in the area are acceptable for a multifamily group use. This would be an acceptable use. We had no comments for item number four. Number five, the impact of the proposed property upon property debt values of contiguous property owners is evidenced by the testimony or written opinion of the city's Economic Development Committee Director, a certified property appraiser, or opinion of a realtor license in the Commonwealth regularly listing and selling properties within the city. Our Economic Development Specialist Mac Chapman commented, I do not believe the proposed development will have a negative impact on property values in the area. Number six, whether the natural topography screening or proposed screening to be put in place by the applicant is sufficient to promote health, safety, and general welfare of the community to protect and conserve the value of contiguous properties and to encourage the most appropriate use of contiguous properties. City Code currently would not require any type of screening, however, that could be made a condition if it were to be brought up. We had no comments for number seven and eight does not apply because this is not involved a parking garage. And Mr. Michael Baer, who I said is the output, he is here and he would just like to make a few comments.
Sure. Mr. Baer, if you'd like to come on up.
Good afternoon. Uh, the, the proposed units that we're building are going to be probably, they're two-story units. They're 1,300 square foot. They, two and a half bath. The rents will vary anywhere from probably around 1,400 to 1,800 a month. They're going to be, we're aware of the sewer. So whatever engineering that we're prepared to do, whatever engineering necessary to kind of accommodate the units. And really, the, the amount of units is going to be based on the engineering too. Once, once they get hold of it and kind of lay it out, then that'll be the final. And I guess there was a concern about off-street parking.
Yeah, I need to make one last comment after Mr. Baer's.
Okay. We're, we're going to provide the off-street parking. I mean, in the center of the, of the space is, is what we're looking at. In the place to park. And the other developments we've done, we've provided the trash. So we, we service the private trash.
Okay.
I, staff did receive a few comments on the proposal by phone for people who could not attend the public hearing. And we did have one gentleman named Bobby Mullins. He had opposed the project because he is concerned about traffic and then people might be parking on Monroe Street. Another commenter, Danielle Cepeda. She said she was fine with the development as long as it was not low-income housing. And we did have a call from the owner of the Budget Inn Express. And once I explained the proposal to him, he didn't have any objection.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming today, Mr. Baer.
Thank you.
If, if that concludes our staff report, I hereby close our public hearing and I'll ask the planning commission to close their hearing as well.
I hereby close our public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. The next item of our agenda is a joint public hearing for zoning map amendment 04-2022, Exit One Properties. So I hereby open that public hearing and ask the planning commission to open this public hearing for them as well.
Thank you. I hereby open the planning commission's public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. We had a few folks who signed up for public comment for this item. The first person is Mr. Howard Bartholomay? Did I pronounce that correctly? Okay.
Yeah, so my question, I had bought property, I guess adjacent to as investment property in a residential area. So now, my question is, what, what is going in there? And what's going in there? Will it affect the value of my property negatively? You know, is, is the land up for sale? Has it already been sold? Is there plans on what's going to go and be developed? You know, what's going to be in my backyard? I would like to know that.
All good questions. And maybe after we get through everyone's comment, when Mr. Dietrich starts with his report, maybe we can sort of kind of back up and give a little bit of a history of kind of how this came about and what kind of started this, just, just to kind of give everyone a little bit of a background. So that sounds good.
So earlier this year, we are, I believe it began last year. There was a rezoning request for one of the lots at the corner of Veta Drive and Gatesby Highway. And it was going to be for a proposed hotel. So that came to the planning commission, came to the city council, and it was approved and rezoned. Shortly after that, property on the other side of Veta Drive with Gate City Highway, the filthy insurance agency property. He brought in a request for a rezoning. It went through the process. It was approved as well. At that time, staff was asked by council or kind of instructed that we didn't really want to do this one property at a time. So I kind of took that as a beginning to start contacting property owners in this area, the Everett Street area, the Veta Drive area, to gauge their interest in having that property rezone. And that, and that's kind of where we were. We, we've sent out multiple certified letters. We had a neighborhood meeting back in August. We have done door stuffers to notify everybody that we possibly can that we either own property or join property. So that's kind of where we are right now. And I will say one of the things, basically anything that would be allowed in a B3 district would be allowed to come here once it's rezoned, if it were to be rezoned. To my knowledge, there are no known plans for, from the city to do anything to this property. It would be up to private developers to purchase individual lots or purchase multiple lots if they wanted to do any extra development out there. City Code makes it very clear that if you have a home out there and you have a residential use, then you can continue that residential use for as long as you like. If you discontinue that residential use for a period of up to two years, then you will no longer be able to have that residential use. So you would have to sit vacant for two years. Or if it were, say, an active odd, fire, tornado, you have two years to begin to rebuild that process to keep those vested rights. Or if you converted it to a business and then wanted to convert it back to a residence, then you would have to come back to the planning commission for approval. So that's kind of how we got where we are.
So just to kind of repeat, if there's a residence now, a single-family home or a duplex, it can continue to be used for the purposes of a residence, a residential.
Right. But from what will, see, I did receive one other individual rezoning request and I did speak with him and said, well, okay, we're going to be, he just decided to include it into ours. So, but from what I, but I have not heard from anybody as to, yes, this property will be sold to a certain individual or a certain company or anything like that.
We have a few more public comments. We'll do that and then we'll get into staff report if that's...
Can I, can I ask one question to, to Mr. Dietrich before we do that? So I know you said that the, the right to use it as a residential would continue unless there's a two-year break. So does that continue in perpetuity even if the owners change of the house? Like, like say, say someone lives in the house and they sell, they keep the right?
Yes, that runs with the land, not the ownership.
We have a few more people who signed up for public comment. The next is Mr. Stephen Gobble.
My name is Stephen Gobble Jr., 2761 Everett Street for the record. I just had a question. I think it probably was answered earlier on outside of here, but I just want confirmation so that it's on public record. Page seven of eight of the preliminary staff report that was sent out. In the Natural Resources section, it says connection to public water and sewer will be required by Bristol, Virginia Utilities. Now, there's five of us, even though the GIS doesn't show it, there are five of us that are not hooked up to public sewer. So who would be responsible for paying to hook up? Or would we be required before it's turned over to a business use?
That's a good question.
Any potential developer would be required to do that if, if say they came in. Currently, it's fine the way it is. But if, if any potential developer were to come in and purchase that property or anything, they would be required to extend all water and sewer.
Okay, so we as residents won't have to...
No, 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 no. You won't have to do anything like that.
Thank you.
The next person that signed up for public comment is Mr. Richard Barnett.
He basically answered my question. I'm at 2775, I'm low Steve, and that did answer my question, so everything is taken care of.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. That's the last person that signed up for public comment, so we'll move into more staff report. Mr. Dietrich?
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the planning commission. I'm going to go here to start here. So the city of Bristol, in conjunction, you know, with the existing property owners, had submitted a zoning map amendment for multiple properties located in the exit one area. Their properties are approximately 45... Their properties are approximately forty-five acres, and they are a mix of residential and vacant uses. The properties are currently zoned R-two, single fam, single and two-family residential, and there is a little bit of property that's still, uh, zoned O-I, which is office and institutional. And the request is to amend the zoning map to B-three, general business district, oh, sorry. So I'm going to leave this up here. The area that is outlined in the white, everything inside there is the proposed rezoning. So you have the Veda Drive properties, you have the Everett Street properties, and you have properties that would eventually be addressed from Gate City Highway that are owned currently by Bristol Mall Holdings. Section fifty dash seventeen of the city code details the process for an applicant to present a zoning map amendment request to be heard by the planning commission and council. The process is prescribed in Code of Virginia fifteen-two twenty-two eighty-five. This item will first be considered by the planning commission at a regularly scheduled meeting. Following its review, a joint public hearing will be held with the city council in accordance with Virginia State Statute fifteen-two twenty-two oh-four. The item will then be considered again by the planning commission at a regularly scheduled meeting to consider a recommendation to the city council. The council will then approve or deny the request. If approved, there will be two ordinance readings by the council. The council will then, uh, sorry, joint public hearing shall also require notice to be provided to adjoining property owners pursuant to Virginia State Statute fifteen-two twenty-two oh-four, as well as advertised twice in the newspaper. The advertisements were made in the newspaper in accordance with state and city code, as well as adjoining and, um, members of the rezoning because there were so many parcels, we were also required to send letters out to the people who were affected by the rezoning. Those were submitted and sent out in accordance with state and city code as well. So the existing land use is a mix of residential and vacant land. Uh, existing zoning designation, single and two-family residential and O-I, office and institutional. Future land use map designation is single-family and professional office. Size of the site is approximately forty-five acres. The property is a mix of established residential use and vacant land. The property currently being used for residential, and I addressed this earlier, but would be allowed to remain residential under section fifteen dash eight, non-conforming uses, buildings and structures. That is the two-year non-conforming. There are twenty single-family homes on Veda Drive and two duplex units. There are nine single-family houses on Everett Street and seventeen duplex or multifamily units. The remainder of the property is vacant. The compatibility with the neighboring land uses and the effects on community character. The subject property is bordered by a mix of residential, office, and commercial uses, and of course, it is right next to and behind the, uh, proposed Hard Rock Casino. B-three zone characteristics and description pursuant to section fifty dash twenty-two J. The purpose of the B-three district is to provide a place for business uses that do not require a central location. It shall provide areas for the development of retail and personal service, commercial, community, and regional shopping centers of integrated design and high-density development of commercial businesses in certain areas adjacent to major transportation arteries or thoroughfares within the city. Consistency with the two thousand seventeen adopted comprehensive plan. The seventeen city comprehensive plan addresses future commercial development of the former Bristol Mall site. However, a casino had not been in the works when that plan was approved. Objective number one of the Commercial and Employment Area Framework Plan one A encourages promotion of commercial reinvestment along Gate City Highway. And objective five encourages leveraging Bristol's many unique assets to increase tourism and visitors into the city. Future land use map updated and revised in two thousand nineteen shows the subject property is single-family detached and professional office. This is defined as homes that are standalone housing units with one unit per parcel. But because of the opening of the casino and the, the entire Gate City Highway quarter is likely to change in the next comprehensive plan and future use plan update. That update is scheduled to begin probably within the next sixty, I know you can push it out to ninety days. The RFP has been written and is about ready to be advertised, so that process is getting started. Uh, impacts. Since the proposed, the proposed use of the property is currently unknown. The traffic volume generated by the, this request is unknown. Gate City Highway is running currently below capacity, however, future traffic with the addition of the casino and other associated businesses is certain to increase. The traffic impact analysis that I've told you about a few times before at other ones, um, it is in process. They are working, Hard Rock is, since Hard Rock had hired the consultant, they are working with VDOT to go over all the required elements of that. And we hope within the next two to three months, that will be complete. What that will do is tell us how much traffic will be projected based on the casino and based on other potential properties, and then we'll identify proposed improvements. Then we can take that plan, if we need to ask for any grant money from, uh, Federal Highway or VDOT, and show them that, yes, this is what we need. On the natural resources, there should be no adverse effects on natural resources for the rezoning. Uh, staff will require all environmental-related permitting to be obtained and approved prior to development, including soil erosion control and stormwater management. Connection to public water and sewer will be required by Bristol, Virginia Utilities, I might add, with all new development. School system, the proposed map amendment should not impact local school system. The proposed map amendment should not impact local parks and recreation facilities and services. Uh, emergency services, we have a comment from Fire Marshal Eric Blevins. Hydrant location and flow rates in this area are acceptable for these types of usage groups, office and institutional, and general business district. Traffic volume in the future could affect responses in the area, but keeping up with the development of the area will be needed for all facets and different uses, usages of land in this location. Change would be acceptable. Uh, Richard Atkins of B V U commented, we have no issues with this request. Philip King of B V U commented that an eight-inch sewer main line provides sanitary sewer service along Veda Drive. The northeast portion of Everett Street is served by a six-inch sanitary sewer line, while the southwest portion has no sanitary sewer available. The parcels to the west of Veda Drive, Everett Street, and the Bristol Casino have no sewer service available. These are the parcels that have been brought up today and mostly the vacant property you have behind the current casino. Both Veda Drive and Everett Street sanitary sewer flows into an interceptor line that will need to be upsized to meet future demands at the casino, and I know they are working on that with all of their plans. The projected flows of any development will need to be provided to B V U authority to ensure adequate system capacity. Additionally, sanitary sewer from Veda Drive and Everett Street will eventually enter the Bristol, Tennessee sanitary sewer system. Therefore, Bristol, Tennessee sanitary sewer system will also need to be evaluated to ensure adequate system capacity. Developer, if there was one, would be responsible for providing the proposed flows. If required, the developer will be responsible for all costs associated with increasing capacity within the B V U A and/or Bristol, Tennessee sewer systems to serve any future development. The lots, the lots along Veda Drive are served by a two-inch water line. Uh, I think this is a typo of Mr. King, the lots along Everett Street are served by a six-inch water main. The lots to the west of Veda Drive, Everett Street, and the Bristol Casino have no water service at this time. And again, the developer will be required to demonstrate that the existing B V U water system is capable of meeting the needs of the proposed development. If required, the developer will be responsible for all costs associated with expanding the B V U water system to serve the development. Uh, public transit, rezoning of this property to B-three will not adversely impact transit resources. Uh, this has to be updated a little bit because transit system now does run to the casino. It is possible that it could run to other areas if they were needed. Government services, Public Works Director Jacob Chandler commented that once a site plan is submitted to the city, uh, city would develop whether or not private trash service is required. An economic development specialist, Mac Chapman, commented, I do not see an issue with rezoning this area to B-three to accommodate those owners interested in rezoning. It will increase future business development in that area.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Dietrich? One thing I just wanted to say, uh, since this is the public hearing, we will not be taking any action on it tonight. It's just an opportunity for us to discuss and to listen, but in the future, if anyone, any residents do have any questions uh, in the neighborhood, it's okay to reach out to any of us, but also to reach out to your office directly as well with any questions. Is that okay?
And, um, the planning commission will meet next Monday at noon to offer a recommendation of yes or no. And then, two weeks from tonight, it will go to the city council for first ordinance reading for yes or no approval. So just for those who are here tonight that may have thought action was going to be taken tonight, I just wanted to kind of bring up those dates.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Uh, so I'll go ahead and close our public hearing and ask the planning commission to close their public hearing as well.
Thank you, I hereby close the public hearing of the planning commission, thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is an ordinance to create a zoning map amendment for property located on Amy Street, map parcel thirteen hyphen one hyphen five. Nobody signed up for public comment for this item, so staff report.
Uh, yes, uh, Soap and Two LLC has submitted an application for a zoning map amendment for the property located on Amy Street, map parcel thirteen-one-five. The request is for the property to be rezoned from R-two, single and two-family residential, to R-three, moderate-density residential. Uh, this approve, this amendment was approved on first ordinance reading at the September twenty-seventh city council meeting.
All right, thank you. What's the pleasure of the council?
Uh, I move for second reading of the ordinance by caption only. Second.
So we have a motion and a second, uh, is there any council discussion?
Uh, I'm excited about, um, about potential for growth on Amy Street, and, uh, I appreciate the, um, the developers' plans that they have made. It looks like it will be a good, a good development that will, uh, add something that's sorely needed, um, in our city, which is more housing, you know, we you know, it's not just Bristol, we're not unique, we have, uh, we have a bit of a housing shortage. Uh, and, uh, and this action, and, you know, some of the other actions we discussed, and I will go a long way to help that. Uh, so I'm excited to see them, uh, get going.
Uh, I, I'd agree, and I'd say the area where we're unique, uh, relative to our neighbors, uh, south of us, is we can't annex. So we have to be very creative in, in how we use what land is available. So, uh, I do think this is, is, is a well-needed development, and it seems to fit with that area very well.
And we've discussed things throughout the times, the hearings and the first reading about things like, people brought up traffic, looking at traffic studies on Amy Street and Wagner Street and so forth. So we feel, feel good about that process. So, okay. Well, if there's no further discussion, we do have a motion in the second, for the second reading by caption only, so clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Barnum?
Yes. Uh, reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance number twenty-two hyphen sixteen, an ordinance by the city council of Bristol, Virginia, approving the request by Soap and Two LLC to amend the city zoning map from single and two-family residential R-two to moderate-density residential R-three for property described as map parcel number thirteen hyphen one hyphen five.
Okay, thank you. Now we're looking for a motion from the council to adopt the ordinance.
I move for adoption of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Barnum?
Yes. The, uh, next item is our consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
Move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve our consent agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Barnum?
Yes. That's the last item of our agenda, so if there's no further business, we stand adjourned.